Good morning, we'll begin in just a little bit. Okay, welcome to the board meeting for Tuesday, August 9th, 2016. Will you all rise and join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll do roll call, Mr. and Mrs. Clerk.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Slocum.
Here, thank you. Well done. We'll move into public comment, I don't know if we have any public comment cards?
Yes, Mr. President, we do. First, we'll have Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Malp B., and county council, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, and thank all of you for making the Laura's Law presentation to the Department of Veterans Affairs Palo Alto Healthcare System Mental Health Summit on Friday, August 19th, possible. Please authorize development of a training program for improving the delivery of treatment to persons and family members of persons living with serious mental illness, including veterans, whether or not they lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily. San Mateo County lost 28 acute adult psychiatric care treatment beds in June and July of 2011, when your predecessors approved the closing of six acute care treatment beds at San Mateo Medical Center, and another 22 acute care treatment beds were closed at Sequoia Hospital. No Measure A funds were authorized to restore any of those lost acute adult psychiatric care treatment beds, even though Measure A's proponents promised to restore services that were cut for budgetary reasons. This recent history of neglect demonstrates a tangible need for improving the delivery of treatment to the mentally ill, even if the civil grand jury had not found any evidence that many of our mentally ill youth are transported outside of the county to receive care. Developing a training program for improving the delivery of services to the mentally ill is an important part of Laura's Law. Please authorize development of a training program for improving the delivery of treatment to persons and family members of persons living with serious mental illness, including veterans, whether or not they lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily. But also please commend the Measure A Oversight Committee for its report that the early review of mentally ill people in jail program failed to connect 239 of the 283 persons who were released with the community-based services that they needed during your February 23rd meeting. Thank you.
Next, we have James Stansberry.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board. I'm here to kind of just give you an update on what's happening both with residential services and Project 90. In 19 days, we will be losing our center, which means that that will eliminate 32 beds. For the last three years or four years, we've been working with the county on a alternate plan, which would be kind of a hybrid residential of intensive outpatient during the day and then housing to take care of the residency. Two weeks ago, the county decided not to do that, thereby kind of eliminating what the alternatives might be. So, in the immediate future, looking at other residential programs, all are full, we have long waiting lists, half the people drop off the waiting list. We've been bringing in about 16, 18 people a month and getting about 50 requests a month. So, the alternative will be to drop people to outpatient or to the street, and I'm just giving you this to advise you what is in the future. We still have the ability to provide some services, we're evaluating whether that makes sense, and we also have the capability of doing some residential housing, but that's also full. So, the situation is kind of dire as far as what we've been working on, and so I thought I would give you an update. The rationale for the county of after having worked for three years of what would be an alternate plan, I'm not sure they blame it on county council, I'm not sure that that would be where it would go, but that we should have went for an RFP four years ago to do what isn't even known today. Anyway, that's my time, if there was any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question, is I thought that we had come up with some funding for some of the, not necessarily Project 90, but a series of like...
We did, and including Project 90. There are a number of operational issues with Project 90 that the behavioral health is working through at the present time.
Next, we have Huergo Plaff.
Hi, my name is Jürgen Pfaff. First of all, dear President Slocum and supervisors, my name is Jürgen Pfaff. My wife Jennifer and I live in Burlingame on Basswood Avenue. I'm here today to talk about the Coyote Point Eastern Promenade Re-juvenation Project. We just recently learned about that. My wife and I use the park quite frequently, we either walk or run there several times a week, and we looked up this project and we see there are some really nice improvements done on those. They are, you know, improving the beach area, also raising the promenade to accommodate rising sea levels, all good stuff, but their plan also calls to remove 117 mature trees, including 83 blue gum eucalyptus trees that are part of a mature grove. This grove was actually planted in 1880 by Sean McLaren. Those of you who don't know him, he also gave us the Golden Gate Park. So, to us, to remove 117 trees to put blacktop on there is environmentally unconscionable. In addition, these trees have a historic significance, so the project should have considered mitigating measures to protect these trees. So, I implore you to have the Parks Department look at rethinking these plans, also with the aspect of how many parking spots are really needed, and also alternate locations to protect the trees. From our limited experience, we are on there several times, the parking lots are never full. So, there should be a different way to address that without cutting down these trees. Thank you very much.
Our next two speakers will be talking on consent items. First, we have Michelle Beasley on item 44, followed by Michael Lane on item 11.
Good morning, Honorable Board, President Slocum, members of the Board of Supervisors.
I will do that. Is she here?
My name is Michelle Beasley, and I'm the Executive Director of the San Mateo County Parks Foundation, and I'm speaking on consent item 44. On behalf of the Parks Foundation's Board of Directors, I'm honored to be making a donation to the San Mateo County Parks Department, $84,250. This is going to a number of different programs and projects, including the 2016 Summer Conservation Cruise, they recently just wrapped up working on a number of park and trail improvements in our county parks. It's also going to the County Park Explorer Shuttle, which is launching this September, will be a free weekend loop, taking people from the communities of East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, and downtown Redwood City to Edgewood and Wonder Lake Parks. And we're also helping to fund new trail signs at Hutter and Wonder Lake Parks, in addition to some funding for the Take a Hike and the Bicycle Sunday programs. So, I'm very excited to be making this gift to county parks today, and I look forward to coming back and making more gifts to the county in the future. Thank you.
We look forward to that as well, thank you.
Our final speaker is Michael Lane on consent item 11.
President Slocum, members, Michael Lane, Board President with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, want to go ahead and offer our gratitude and support for moving forward with an extension of the Measure A sales tax. As you know, we're facing an affordability and displacement crisis on the peninsula in terms of affordable housing for our residents, and for those who have special needs, we absolutely need to be able to meet that need. We think this is the right time and appropriate. This board has been as proactive, quite frankly, as any Board of Supervisors in the state to address the housing crisis. This is an additional tool which will provide the resources to actually collaborate with our local jurisdictions, as they bring their funds together and leverage those with state and federal resources to really address this issue. We thank you very much and urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
That was our last speaker.
That's it, thank you. I would just like to take a moment, if appropriate, and invite Supervisor Groom to comment on the Coyote Point tree matter, and also maybe she would call on Marlene Finley, who I see in the back row there.
Thank you, Mr. President. The master planning of the Coyote Point Park has been underway for quite a long time. Couple of years ago, one of the other side of the promenade was completed, and I think made really excellent improvements in the park. There are some restructuring of parking to meet with more needs that have now grown into the park, especially those with the board people in the water, the kite people and the paddleboard folks, they needed a little more space. So, there really is just a kind of a redistribution of parking with a couple of added slots here and there. As to the trees, most of the tree replacement is being done with more native species, especially Monterey cypress, which will actually do much better in the climate that our park sits in, so close to the bay. So, I think those are some of the reasons to do, and I've been kind of paying, obviously paying attention to this because it's one of our premier parks in San Mateo County, but I wonder if Director Finley would like to add some comments to what's going on at Coyote Point Park.
Thank you. Yes, we've been in the planning stages for almost two years now for the east promenade, and we are looking at removing 117 trees. If you're familiar with the old site where the Castaway Restaurant was, that's the location. It's what I would call an overmature eucalyptus stand, where we're spending thousands of dollars a year trimming and removing dead and dying eucalyptus trees, and that's where we need to relocate some of the parking, because as we pull the promenade to the east to allow for sea level rise and to replace the sandy beach, we lost some parking spots, so we need to relocate them up on the knoll. So, that's the area that we're talking about this morning, and myself and staff would be happy to come back and give a presentation to the board about Coyote Point East Promenade in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene, we'll invite you to do just that. That was a very gracious offer, thank you, appreciate it. Next, we're going to take an action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items, and I know that item number four on your agenda, which is listed under the Human Services Agency, will be pulled from this agenda and moved to a meeting in September.
Move approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, with the exception of moving item number four.
Second.
Been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we'll move to presentations and awards. Item number one, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating August 26th, 2016, as Women's Equality Day, and Supervisor Groom.
Thanks, Mr. President. Talk about Women's Equality Day, which is on August 26th of 2016. 96 years ago, in 1920, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women the right to vote in the United States of America. In 1971, Congresswoman Bella Absug introduced legislation to designate August 26th as of each year as the day to celebrate women winning the right to vote. The first Women's Rights Convention in the United States took place in Seneca Falls, New York, in July of 1848, and was the beginning of this particular civil rights movement. Although it took 72 years for women to achieve universal suffrage, since achieving the right to vote, significant strides toward equality in the past 96 years have included the Equality Pay Act of 1963, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and Title IX of Education Amendments of 1972, that assured that women had equal opportunities in educational and athletic programs. Celebration of Women's Equality Day in San Mateo County is a joint venture between the Commission on the Status of Women and the Women's Community Leadership Network, and will be celebrated this year on Friday, August 26th, at Kitchen Town, Howard Avenue in San Mateo, where there will be a mixer celebrating women's equality, Congresswoman Spear, and a member of Rosie, the Rosie the Riveter team will be present to help us celebrate, and so I would invite everybody to attend on August 26th. In the interim, Adrian, would you join me as we present the Women's Equality Day proclamation to Linda Kelling, who is a board member on the Commission on the Status of Women?
Smile.
President Slocum, board members, it's an honor to be here to receive this proclamation today, and Supervisor Groom took everything I was going to say today, with the exception, no, it is an honor. It has been 96 years since women had the right to vote, and it's, we've come a long way. But since 1972, it seems like we've had to remind everybody that this is Women's Equality Day, so they've designated the 26th of August as the special day. I'm not sure they needed this, because I think Helen Reddy's song, "I Am Woman," says it all. "I am invincible, I am strong, and I can do anything, so hear me roar." And women have been doing that for the last 96 years, and they're going to be doing it for the next 196 years. The fight for equal rights continues, and this special day is just a symbol of that continued fight. I want you to know that your Advisory Commission, the Commission on the Status of Women, works very hard to improve the quality of life for women in San Mateo County, and are to be commended and supported in their activities. We also look for additional issues to look to and explore, and with your help, we will certainly entertain any of the ideas that you all may have. And to commemorate Women's Equality Day, this special event, special mixer, is on tap, as Supervisor Groom said, and it was funny when we heard the name of the venue, Kitchen Town. Women, kitchen, and it brought to mind words of another, other lyrics, where women do bring home the bacon and we can fry it up in the pan. Now, I will not go into song, because it'll be a very long day, but we saw this venue as a special place, it's kind of unique, it's over on Howard Avenue, and when you get the flyer, you'll see exactly where it is, it's on the border of Burlingame and San Mateo. But it's a local area, right on that border of Burlingame and San Mateo, as I said, it's a fully licensed food production facility, along with a very comfortable café, it provides innovative food production space for startup food companies with an emphasis on health, nourishment, social responsibility, and culinary diversity. And would you believe that half of the business people in that location are women? So, it's kind of an appropriate venue, and as Carol said, Congresswoman Spear will be there, and an original Rosie the Riveter will also be there. So, again, on behalf of the Commission, I want to thank you for recognizing Women's Equality Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda, good job. Thank you Supervisor Groom for your leadership on this issue. I understand, I've never been there, but Kitchen Town is a very special place, I would encourage you to take a look at the details of this flyer. Again, the event is Wednesday, August 21st, 24th, I'm sorry, August 24th, and there is a website where you can go and purchase advance tickets, and I would encourage you to do that. And once again, Supervisor Groom, I know you're the president of this organization, and we appreciate your leadership. Now, we move on to the regular agenda, item number two, which is a resolution authorizing the hiring of retired deputy assessor county clerk recorder, David Tom.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you're aware, Mr. Tom recently retired. The presidential election, of course, is coming up in September, it's a major election, and with his years of experience, the assessor is requesting permission to hire Mr. Tom on a extra help basis through the election period to both get us through the election and hopefully train his or his successor. The law requires the board act on this item as a regular item on the agenda. Mr. Rosari is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malp.
Well, I just have one question, because actually, one of the recent candidates for president said that elections would be potentially rigged, without, I guess, recognizing that elections really are controlled by local government as opposed to the federal government. But my concern with this is, I mean, we all know David Tom, that is having run for office, I've met with him a number of times. My question really would be, what really is the plan, because elections are so integral and so important to democracy, what really is the plan for replacing him? Do you have somebody in place now, or is there a training program? Because it is incredibly important, what he does and did is incredibly important, so I would like to know what the plan is for the future.
The current plan that Mr. Church has, and by the way, Mr. Church is attending the California Association of Assessors today, and unfortunately could not be here, and it's my pleasure to be here this morning. The plan that we have in place is to conduct an extensive statewide recruitment for the position, which will take approximately six months or so to undertake, and the challenge is that we have right now is that we're in the middle of planning for the November 8th Presidential General Election. So, it's not the ideal time at this juncture to begin a recruitment, because those registrar voters that we're really seeking to attract to the position are busily conducting an election for their county. So, our strategy is to wait until after the election, and after, really after the certification period, to begin in earnest the full recruitment process for the position. In the interim period, what we are seeking is to have Mr. Tom return from retirement, and he has graciously agreed to do so, to work with our staff in addressing many of the complex logistical aspects of such an election. In addition, we have authorized through the Department of Human Resources, a double fill position of deputy county clerk, assessor, recorder, position at the deputy level, to basically work with Mr. Tom in the process of what we call knowledge transfer, and documenting all of the policies and procedures, and basically trying to acquire the knowledge that Mr. Tom has over 16 years in writing, and we are going to outline business practices, workflows, use cases, policies, and procedures during this period of time, and that's what the double fill position will be doing. And as I said, after the election, then we'll begin in earnest with the Department of Human Resources, and quite possibly an external recruitment firm to recruit for the position.
Mr. President, just a comment, I'm not sure why we would wait to after the election to begin the recruitment, I could understand why it would take six months, but remembering that under the county's retirement system rules, Mr. Tom can only work for 960 hours, there would not be any opportunity to overlap with the new elections official, whereas if we began the recruitment now, there would be some overlap potentially. So, I'm not sure what the rationale is for delaying starting the recruitment.
Mr. President, Mr. Malp, the recruitment is really starting right now, we've already sat down with HR, and we've begun the process of at least identifying that. The actual recruitment process is one that requires a lot of staff time, and what we hope to do, really, is to have Mr. Tom here during this period of time to help us with the election. The law, Pepper Law, allows 960 hours per fiscal year for a retiree to return, and so we have 960 hours this fiscal year for Mr. Tom to be here. So, theoretically, we have another 960 hours, starting January 1 of 2017, that Mr. Tom can assist in that carryover process. But what we really are focusing on right now, and it's a laser focus, is the conduct of the Presidential General Election, which is a very complex election.
My understanding is our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30th, isn't it?
The retirement year, though, runs from July 1st, or I'm sorry, January 1st to December 31st. Again, though, if the thought is that we don't begin the requirement, retirement, sorry, recruitment, to basically the beginning of next year, there's not going to be very much overlap, and I would think, given the knowledge transfer that Mr. Rosari spoke about, that we would want to have as much overlap as possible. The initial stages of recruitment don't involve a lot of the department, frankly, and most of their involvement is at the end of the recruitment process, where there are interviews and that sort of thing. So, I'm not sure why the delay, frankly, I just don't understand it.
Mr. President, and Mr. Malp, we certainly can begin the process earlier, if that's what, you know, you would like us to do, and usually a recruitment process is one that you go through, and then you see how the candidates evolve, the applicants evolve, and if you need to extend it, you do so. But again, you know, we would like to avail ourselves of the best possible applicant pool, and we believe that that may be somewhat restricted, given that the, I think, the highest caliber people that we're seeking are right now in the middle of conducting the presidential election.
Well, I mean, I would recommend that you actually start the process now, but it also tells me that, you know, we've talked a number of times in order, different departments about succession planning, it doesn't sound like there was, there's anybody within your organization that really is, has been kind of brought up to speed, or has, it doesn't look like there's anybody within the organization, or maybe, maybe I'm asking the wrong question, is there somebody within your organization that could actually be the successor? Or have you done succession planning with the anticipation that, you know, Mr. Tom was going to retire?
Through the chair. One of the aspects of succession planning, which is critical, is staffing, and we have requested in prior budgets, an assistant deputy position for that purpose. Our department is, by the studies that we've done recently and conducted by the county, is literally the leanest in the state of California, and that kind of hampers our ability to bring in somebody at that caliber to actually be the next director of the department. We are very, very fortunate, though, that we have professional, dedicated, and committed, highly trained election staff that are very capable of running this election. We have, in the two supervisors that we have there right now, we have over 30 years' experience in elections management experience. So, we are, we're pretty well set with the existing staff there to conduct an election, but in terms of actually managing an operation, Mr. Tom and other registrar voters have said that really it takes at least two election cycles, and those are presidential cycles, to really understand the business. So, those are two four-year cycles, so it takes about eight years to truly have a person in place that learns the system, and unfortunately, we haven't had the ability to do that.
Mr. Pine.
It sounds like we'll need Mr. Tom for this initial 960 hours, and perhaps more in the next fiscal year, is it your understanding that he's available to work for that period of time?
It's my understanding that Mr. Tom has graciously accepted that challenge, yes.
Thank you.
I got a quick question, Mr. Rosari. I'm not sure I followed all of your response, but we did talk about this idea of the knowledge transfer from Mr. Tom to someone. My understanding that there are going to be two divisions- My understanding that there are going to be two division managers between now and let's say the end of the year, Mr. Tom coming back from retirement and then somebody else that he's going to be doing this knowledge transfer with?
That is absolutely correct, Mr. President. The system that is in place in the county is to allow for a double fill of positions where there is a pending retirement. Mr. Tom's retirement occurred on July 9th, which was relatively unexpected although he had talked about it, but we didn't expect it on July 9th. The county system allows for a double filling of positions in order to provide that knowledge transfer for the period that the person is there prior to their retirement. What we are doing right now is taking advantage of that double fill process and hiring a deputy assessor county clerk recorder as a double fill, which will be working with Mr. Tom and also helping in the logistics of the election, but primarily with the knowledge transfer. This person will be documenting the business use cases, the workflows, the policies, the procedures, which are pretty extensive during this period of time. So, that knowledge transfer is one that's going to occur more in writing than experiential per se. And then at that point in time, we will begin a recruitment, a process to fill the position permanently.
Mr. Malby, I still don't understand with due respect to Mr. Rosari, we're going to have two division heads, two division managers for some period of time?
Correct.
And that other division manager may or may not be the person selected for the permanent opening.
I think you understand the proposal.
Can I also ask you another question about, is that division manager, that double person, is that somebody from within your department or is that somebody?
No, it was somebody that we will bring from the ex, from the outside.
Will that be a long recruitment period?
No, at this point in time, we have identified an individual that has worked for the department in other areas, who is, I'll release her name, is Colleen Leon, who has worked in various departments in, in the county and has worked with us in terms of our budget development process. She has, she's an attorney by background. She's very detailed in what she does and we thought that this would be an excellent candidate to bring her on primarily to document the business practices, procedures, policies as long as Mr. Tom is there.
Thank you, Mr. Rosari. Any other comments, questions?
Just one other comment is that when we, I hate to keep talking about succession plan, but when you were talking about the two supervisors having 30 years of experience, I'm a little concerned about, suppose they retire. I mean, do we have people, are we doing succession planning in, in elections to make sure that we, you know, have people who, you know, are able to actually take over when somebody retires?
As I mentioned before Supervisor Horsley, succession planning at the level that we're talking about requires staffing. But to answer your question directly, our staff, we have a staff of 12 full-time personnel in elections. And we have such a small operation and a very complex operation. We are one of the most complex election operations in the state of California. We have over 70 jurisdictions that we manage elections for. So, all of our staff literally have to roll up their sleeves and get involved in the process. That process requires by its very nature, given the staffing levels that we have, cross training. So, everyone there, from your ES2s all the way up to your ES3s and supervisors, are familiar with just about every aspect of the elections process. The challenge that we have at the management level is that you have to have someone who has experience in actually managing and conducting elections at that level. And that's what we're seeking when you do a, a knowledge transfer process, when you have an assistant or a management level position that you could train for that purpose.
Any other questions?
No, I think I would just agree with my colleague and also Mr. Malby about at least starting the process now because it could take even longer. You may not find people right away. So, I would suggest that even though it will take some time, that, you know, we don't waste any time. We just move forward and work with HR because they do a lot of the heavy lifting. It doesn't always require the department to do as much heavy lifting. So, I would just suggest that be part of our motion if we do this.
Thank you. Supervisor Horsley?
Is that the motion?
Yes.
And I'll second your motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Rosari.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President Slocum, we can go back to item number one and just, I think we need to make a motion on that proclamation, just as a matter of technicality.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Byers. I move that we accept the proclamation honoring Women's Equality Day for 2000, for August 26, 2016.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Big sign right here that says make motion.
We are now on item number three, which is acting as the governing board of the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District, conduct a public hearing regarding the annexation of the lands of Beb. And Mr. Porter, you're going to start us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. The department is recom, Mr. Malby and Mr. Byers, the department is recommending annexation of the lands of Beb in the Oak Knoll Sewer District. This property is currently on a septic system. That system is failing. We have the ability to serve. Redwood City has also authorized this connection to flow through their jurisdiction. The property owner has paid or will pay all the fees prior to the annexation. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
That was a great report, Mr. Porter. Thank you. So, we'll have a motion. If, comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And we don't have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
There's no speaker cards?
I will move to close the public hearing. Second.
Sir.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Aye. And now...
I will make a resolution to, I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, as you recall, we pulled item four and moved it to the September meeting. And we'll move now to item number five, which is again, Public Works, Mr. Porter. And this matter has to do with no parking during specified hours on Canyatta Road and Edgewood, Edgewood Road and Palm Circle Road in the Redwood City area. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Slocum. I'll take you through a quick PowerPoint slide to show you the locations we're talking about. So, this request came from the Sheriff's Department and the request was based upon their experience in observing overnight parking on both Edgewood Road and Canyatta Road. This typically happens from large trucks, camping type vehicles that park along these two roads overnight. So, the Sheriff's Office would like to prohibit that. This is around Edgewood Park. It's near I-280 on Edgewood and Canyatta Road. So, on Edgewood Road, there currently is a no parking zone that prohibits parking from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We're recommending that that be adjusted to prohibit parking from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So, you still have that no overnight parking, it just extends the time. That was based upon feedback from park users at Edgewood Park. Certainly in the summertime when it stays light till nine, they'd like to have access to that parking to hike. We incorporated those comments into our recommendation. The other section of the no parking zone runs around along Canyatta Road on the, the westerly side, I'm sorry, of the roadway, down to the county limits, down by Palm Circle. That again would be a no parking zone from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. This shows the objections that we received when we went out for public comment. Those were primarily from park users. We also received a comment from a property owner that is down on, near Palm Circle, that was concerned about parking in front of their property overnight. We had also received comments that our no parking zone did not go far enough south. So, we basically continued with the Sheriff's Office recommendation and included the no parking zone down to Palm Circle in front of those properties. If you look on an aerial, and I'm sorry I don't have one, but a satellite version of this drawing, shows that those properties are fairly large and there's quite a bit of room on the property to park vehicles. Those are big parcels out there. So, the department is recommending approval of the recommendation on the no parking. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions of Mr. Porter?
I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt the resolutions A, B, and C.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded for approving the motions A, B, and C. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Move now to item number six, a presentation on the San Mateo County Resident Satisfaction Survey Results. Mr. Malby?
Mr. President, members of the board, as you may recall, approximately a year ago, the county embarked on an extensive public outreach process with respect to Measure A. Part of that process was to conduct a survey to gain an understanding of the knowledge that the citizens have of the Measure A and the expenditures that have been made thus far for Measure A, as well as a general understanding of the various functions of county government, satisfaction with the services the county provides. And so, we engaged several months ago, Mr. Gobby, to undertake that survey. The results are going to be presented to you in a few minutes. Just some of the highlights include that most citizens are satisfied with the quality of life in, in San Mateo. Not surprisingly, major concerns that citizens have are the cost of housing and traffic congestion, two items that are very related. About almost 60% of the citizens believe the county does a good job in managing its funds, less than a quarter of the citizens don't agree with that. Almost 70% of the citizens are extremely satisfied with the level of sheriff services in the unincorporated area and the cities for which the sheriff serves. And countywide, almost 80% of the citizens believe that they live in safe communities. So, I think overall, and I think you'll have an appreciation for, for this with the presentation, I think the residents of San Mateo County are very satisfied with the level and quality of services that are, that are provided. I want to thank Michelle Duran and her staff for the work that they've been doing on the outreach for Measure A in the last year and the planning for that. And this is certainly a significant step in our overall communications plan with, with the public. And with that, I will turn it over to Michelle and Gobby Research. The county manager's report is the next highlight of the meeting, I know.
You can drag that out.
Three items. The first involves the district attorney's office. About a year ago, the district attorney completed their conversion to the new, their portion of the new criminal justice information system. Among the features that the district attorney's system has is the ability to issue, and Supervisor Horsley will appreciate this, electronic subpoenas to law enforcement agencies. We conducted a pilot survey with Foster City PD, a pilot project with Foster City PD that was very successful. And now, all law enforcement agencies in the county are receiving electronic subpoenas. This is really the first step in what I believe in the relatively near future, we will see really a paperless criminal justice system. The courts are certainly moving in that direction, district attorneys moving in that direction, a number of police departments and the sheriff's department are. So, I think this is an important step and it's one that's being embraced by the law enforcement community.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
For my colleague. I don't understand how subpoenas to law enforcement, what does that entail?
Call to testify in a case?
It was, they would normally, what they would do is they would send up a written form that told, said where you had to testify and what time you had to be there.
So, when they're asking police officers to come to court?
Yeah, actually, they will still do that for citizens because you can't guarantee. So, you gotta, to make sure that somebody's going to be there, you ask, you have to hand deliver to them, make sure that they're actually going to show up at court.
Thank you.
The, the next item on the report is a designation by the Commonwealth Fund that San Mateo County is the third healthiest area in the country. And I think that is, is really stunning when you think about the breadth of that. I know Srija Shrinivasan is, is here today representing the department, but, but really that is just an outstanding recognition of the work over many, many years that the health system has done in, in all areas, from behavioral health to our health clinics, the hospital, public health outreach efforts. And this, I might also add, I think is part of the belief that the average citizen has that quality of life in this county is, is very good. Third item on, on my report is that, and Supervisor Pine might want to elaborate, this day has been long in coming. The San Francisco Kito Creek Project has broken ground for the lower reach improvements in, in East Palo Alto. And it really is the first of hopefully a number of steps that will alleviate flooding from the East Palo Alto, Menlo Park and Palo Alto areas from the San Francisco Kito Creek. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Gobby's here. If you have no further questions, I think I've stretched this out about as long as I can.
Thank you, Mr. Malby. Well done. I just wanted to compliment Supervisor Pine on the San Francisco Kito Creek groundbreaking because being an alternate on the JPA, I know a little bit about the history of it, but I think it's safe to say that Mr. Lattimer? Yep. And Supervisor Pine really had one obstacle after another to overcome. They never gave up. They stuck to it and got it done. So, compliments to you and, and the members of the JPA. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. It has really been eye-opening to see how complex a project is to move, move forward. I think I've mentioned to you in the past that the permitting alone took, took three years and in this particular instance, you know, the JPA has five jurisdictions and, you know, you have to get people to work towards a common goal and funding is extraordinarily difficult. So, it is really, really exciting to see this finally taking place because of the, of the real risks to Palo, East Palo Alto residents. But it's also somewhat sobering because, you know, we have hundreds of projects around the bay now and in the future that hopefully we can find a better way to process.
Thank you. Mr. Gobby, did you have trouble finding a parking place?
Actually, I did, yes. But the truth is, I was waylaid by another client in the plaza behind the building and sat there wringing my hands saying, you gotta go. So, I do apologize for being a few minutes late and thank you, Mr. Malby, for stretching.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm happy to present the county satisfaction data today and we'll see some interesting results. To begin with, and as you know, the goal here was to look at the public's perception of the quality of life in the county as a whole, to look at the various services that the county provides and how satisfied they are with those, and drill down really in terms of how important they are as well as how satisfied they are with those various issues and services in the county. And we'll see that in more detail as we get into the presentation. We also wanted to look at how effectively the county is managing public funds as well as within the areas where the sheriff is responsible for public safety directly. We wanted to look at people's opinion of this department and their feelings of safety. And then finally to gauge opinion of any contact with county employees that might have. There's of course a wealth of demographic and behavioral information that we could delve into and that's literally thousands of pages, so we won't go into that today in deference to your time. In terms of the methodology, this was a telephone and online survey, as we've talked about with previous surveys. Obviously, the point is the lack of landlines or loss of landlines as a way of communicating with people. It has necessitated that we broaden the way we reach them. The sample was all registered voters, so there's no likelihood... the way we reach them. The sample was all registered voters, so there's no likely voter behavior in here. It's really everybody who's registered. And then we weighted to actually the broader universe, which is all adult residents 18-plus, using the 2014 American Community Survey from the Census, or ACS, as we call it. And so this is reflective of that broader population, not just voters, based on the weighting. We were in the field from June 13th through the 23rd. The average survey was 20 minutes long. The final sample was 612, and that gave us online of 244, cellphone 106, and landline 262, which produces a margin of error of 3.96. Any questions about methodology? It's a little different than we've talked about before.
I was just curious, the number of Latinos that were surveyed, Spanish speakers?
Let me check that. I certainly have that data. What if, we asked the question, what ethnic group do you consider yourself closest to? When we just, some of the previous surveys we've talked about, we use ethnic surname. This is actually an asked question, and it's 24.7% are Hispanic or Latino. And that's countywide. It'll vary, obviously, by district. And we have that data in more detail as well.
If I may add a question about the, if I understand correctly, you polled registered voters. But of course, you know, many of the people we serve are probably not registered.
That's right.
So could you help me understand why the unregistered weren't?
Yeah. In the old days, read that as five or six years ago, we used to do what was called a random-digit dial sample. And what that was is we took all of the landline exchanges in the county, and we created the last four digits of the number. So we didn't know who they were, but we knew they're in those exchanges, the first, the middle three numbers, not the area code, obviously, of the phone number. That creates a landline sample. It's virtually useless today because nobody has landlines. And the group that really doesn't have landlines are young Latino males. So you have to find a cellphone for them. And getting the cellphone, it's very difficult to do a random-digit dial sample in a county this size. And so that's why we use the registered voters. But it's all voters, so it's not high propensity voters. And that does give us some Latinos. And when we weighted to the Census data, that's, it expands that universe.
Thank you.
It's all about now about how we do surveys in the 21st century, given the tools that we have or don't have in reality. Any other questions about methodology? So jumping into the first question, this was overall satisfaction with the quality of life. And we simply asked, are you very satisfied, somewhat satisfied? Same thing on the negative side of the equation. For analytical purposes, and make it a little easier, we totaled the satisfaction and the dissatisfaction. You can see in round numbers, 88% are satisfied with the quality of life in the county, 11% are dissatisfied. And that gives us a ratio of 7.7 to 1, which is a great score for a county. Sometimes you'll see cities that will be a little higher. But I think the difference is whenever we've done cities versus counties, it's where do I live? People live in Atherton, or Daly City, or all the other cities. They don't necessarily identify with counties. So typically, county satisfaction with quality of life is a little lower because they ascribe it to where their city. So when you look at other counties, though, this is pretty high. This is actually higher than Marin. It's substantially higher than one that we've been doing every year for the last nine years in Kern County. So you're in pretty good shape compared to those wildly different kinds of counties, obviously, Marin and Kern. The next question was, do you think the quality of life in the next five years is going to get better, about the same, worse, or don't know? And what we saw is that 64% are saying that it'll be better or about the same, and putting those two together, with just 28% saying it's worse, and 7, 8% in round numbers that are saying that they don't know. That's actually a pretty good place to be as well. There's still obviously about a quarter that are saying it would be worse. But the question is how? And we don't really know why that is. It could be because they don't like one of the presidential choices. It could be a lot of things. And we're not really sure what that is. But I think generally, that's a pretty good place to be with less than a quarter. A lot of times, we see it being a third worse, a third the same, and a third better. So we're a little better off than that. The follow-up question was open-ended, and it was, what's the most important issue in the county? And I think this tells you a little bit about that previous question. This, again, is completely open-ended, so these are not scripted responses that we provided. These are items that we coded together to reflect what people are saying. And at the top of this list, 25%, which for an open-ended question, is pretty high. You usually get things in the teens because it's top of mind. And when you get above that, it's certainly significant. And you can see here, it's affordable housing, cost of housing, housing are issues facing the county. Now, that's about 25%. It's pretty close to that same 25% or 28% in reality that we're concerned about the future of the county in terms of the quality of it, of life. And it does, it does make sense with what we're seeing, obviously, every day. The cost of living is impacting people's view of the quality of life. And I think that's what the survey says loud and clear. In the second tier, at statistically different level, we have traffic congestion, crowded population growth. Obviously, that's an issue related to housing as well. Affordability, cost of living, same issue yet again. Jobs in the economy being further down the list, and with the error rate could be very close to zero. Growth in overdevelopment, taxes, roads and infrastructure, and crime rounding out that second tier. Below that, everything with the margin of error could be virtually zero. And so isn't quite as important, although some of those things you might add together, homelessness, and affordable housing, obviously, those things, and affordable cost of living could all be seen as similar issues. But for the most part, the bottom of the list is the bottom of the list. The next question was a little more focused on the county government itself, and was how satisfied are you with the provision of services by the county? The response categories are very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied, and don't know. We see 74% that are saying it's satisfied versus 14% dissatisfied, with a ratio of 5.3 to 1, which is a very good place to be. This typically is lower, again, for counties than it is for cities. But that ratio is comparable to many of the cities we've seen as well. There is still that 12% don't know. And I think that's obviously because of that same issue I mentioned earlier. People identify with their city more than they do with the county. So there's an opportunity there. That's not necessarily a problem, but I think it is an opportunity to reach out to people and begin to explain more what the county does.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Do you have to explain to some of the people on the phone what the county actually does?
No, we didn't, because we don't know who we have to explain that to. And we don't want to bias it. We'd rather know if they're going to say, "Don't know," because I just don't know. That's useful information. I think if we explain it, then we're doing an artificial explanation. It would be better to say, I think, to find out, wow, we've got this slice of people that are uninformed, and it's our job to go out and inform them, rather than doing it in a survey where we would just be informing 600 people.
Through the present to add to what Mr. Gobby said, remember, the underlying basis for this was to provide data for our outreach efforts. So by knowing who doesn't know about county government or the services, we really are being able to start to develop programs that will improve that.
To Supervisor Tessia's point, you know, if we ever did this in the future, it'd be very interesting if you asked people, what does the county, what services the county provide? It'd be interesting what they would say. Because they, you know, are often, you know, invisible to a lot of people.
We actually, and I think that's a great question. We didn't ask it here because of time reasons. But for, I think Supervisor Tessia and Supervisor Groom, who were on the board when we did the survey and focus groups in 2010, we actually asked those questions. And so we do have that information. I don't actually remember it, so I wouldn't expect the members that were there then to remember that. But I think that the problem that we had was people didn't really know when we asked that question in the focus groups. So it wasn't just a survey on the phone. It was two hours of talking about what's going on, where you live, and people just, county, okay, well, police comes from the, you know, city and fire department, some districts, obviously. But, yeah, they don't know. And we could pull that report back up and provide that to you, and you could look at it. It's obviously six years old, so there's some limitations.
I think it'd be worthwhile seeing it, only because I know when I go to homeowner's groups and I speak to them, I always have to sort of explain what role we actually play. Because I think they really do think we, it's just like when I was on the council, they used to think we oversaw the schools. Well, we didn't. So, you know, so I found that they think we do all the services that they get. They don't quite follow it all the time. So I'd just be curious. I mean, obviously, you're right. If people don't know, they don't answer. So that means perhaps it's a smaller number. But I still think there's a lot of people that are answering these things without really knowing what the county does. But, I mean, we won't know that for sure.
Right. So, yeah, I can get that report and provide it to staff. And it certainly worked that you commissioned six years ago, so. Moving on to the next set of questions, and this becomes a little bit of an eye chart, and I apologize for that. But we're trying to get it all on one page. This is the list of issues and services that we asked how important they were. Now, in a moment, you're going to see, we asked the same list, how satisfied they are. And it's the intersection of those that's really important. But looking at them independently first, what we did is we read the items in random order. And then we asked, is this an extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important item in your view? When we're done with the data processing, we go back and assign numeric values. And you see those across the bottom of the slide, 3, 2, 1, 0, from high to low. And what we're doing is creating a mean score that is a more nuanced way of ranking these items. The reason we do that is because you could add the extremely and very together. And you could add an item that is 40%, extremely important, and 20%, very important. That adds up to 60%. You could have another item that was 10%, extremely important, and 50%, very important. It also adds up to 60% as well. But it's an entirely different 60%. So by assigning these numeric values, while it seems somewhat abstract, is a better way of taking that bias out of the question. And obviously, it's not just the extremely and very, but it's the entire response categories that we want to look at. So this balances those problems, albeit making it more complicated-looking, because it's not an intuitive number. We then look at tiers, which are a difference of .2 from high to low, as being statistically significant. And so in tier one, in terms of the most important issues, at 2.48, we have providing 911 emergency dispatch services. And that 2.48, just so you know, and give it some context, equates to 90% who said it is extremely or very important. So now, given the problem that we have that I described earlier, it's still useful to have that context. At a similar level, providing fire protection and paramedic services, virtually the same. School safety in third position, statistically insignificant difference. Providing law enforcement services, combating human trafficking and sexual exploitation, where you can see the ellipses here. You see, we've abbreviated some of the items to make them fit on the slide. And then emergency preparedness. So lots of public safety-related things in that top tier in terms of importance. And 2.48 ranging down to 2.30, or 92%, at least very important, down to 85%. So again, statistically, it's all within the error rate, and they're technically tied. There are some slight differences, obviously. In our second tier, we have mental health services for children, youth, and adults. Prevention of early intervention services for at-risk people. Elder adult protection. Provide high-quality preschool for low-income children. Veteran services, homeless prevention, and housing services, after-school summer reading programs. That second tier, from 2.15 down to .96, 83% at least very important, down to 70% at least very important. So you can see there's a significant shift. They're still important, and lots of people think they are, but at just a lower level of intensity. And then we have the remaining items in lower tiers. I won't read all of those in deference to time. But everything on the list is right at the 50% level, very, at least very important or above, all the way up to the 92. Now, looking at the other side of the equation, this is the same list again, how satisfied are you, scale of difference, very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, no effect, somewhat dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied. The scale, the numbers that we assign to it are 2, 1, 0, minus 1, minus 2. So the scale is slightly different, so the numbers don't match. But it does the same thing. It creates these tiers of satisfaction. And in our top tier of satisfaction, we see provide fire protection and paramedic services, providing law enforcement services, and providing 911 emergency dispatch services. Those are also high on the importance list, so that's good. You're doing a good job there. The 1.42 to 1.39 equates to 85% to 82%, at least somewhat satisfied. So there's a, those are quite good scores. I'm going to not go through that whole list, but I'm going to go to this next slide, which combines the two. And this is important because it tells you what's key to the respondents, but also how satisfied they are. So what we're looking for here is where you're doing, where something is very important, and that, you can see, we've divided this up into the same tiers that we saw on the importance slide. And then we show the satisfaction. So you can see areas like providing 911 emergency dispatch, very high importance, relatively high satisfaction. Provide fire protection, paramedic services, high importance, high satisfaction. Provide law enforcement services, high importance, high satisfaction. Now, some of that is, obviously, could be cities as well, but we're looking overall at the county. So those three items, high satisfaction, or high importance, high satisfaction. You want to keep doing what you're doing in those areas because you want to keep those high scores. But the other three items that have highlighted in red for satisfaction, these are really important things that relatively speaking, they are less satisfied with. So if you're looking for an area to target, to basically get the most bang for your buck, and obviously, dollars are always, for programs are always dear, this is where you're going to have the most impact on the overall quality of life. Because people are saying it's important, but they're just not quite as satisfied as they are with those other items that are in the top tier. And you can see those are school safety, combating human trafficking, and emergency preparedness. Now, that's in the top tier. As we extend down into the next tier, which is also pretty important stuff, you can see that there's lots of relatively high-important scores, but scores that we've highlighted in red on the satisfaction, which say you could do things in these areas, and that that would have an impact on the overall quality of life for residents of the county. And they basically include the whole list. But if you were to cherry pick and say, well, let's go and look at the things that are least satisfied in tier two, you'd instantly see homeless prevention and housing services at 2.01 in terms of the importance, but minus .14. So that's actually on the somewhat less satisfied side of the scale, rather than the satisfied side of the scale. And then going up from there, you would look at the mental health services, prevention and early intervention services, provide high-quality preschool, and then the rest of those items as we go up the scale. So that gives you an idea of where you could have the most impact with discretionary funds that you might have available for additional programs. I know that's really complicated. It takes a little while to absorb.
I guess I just had a question. I guess what that tells me, two things. One, it says people aren't satisfied in those areas. But I guess the other thing it tells me is when I look at those areas, those are ones where we've actually put a lot of resources in. And I guess the question is, the education side that John was speaking to, it really shows us that people really, we're not getting the word out of what we're actually doing.
Well, there's certainly that component of it, too. It is a public information, do they know about your work? And then it is, that would instantly increase the satisfaction if they were aware of it. And that's obviously relatively low cost compared to some of the services themselves. Uh, and, and that's obviously relatively low cost compared to some of the services themselves. Um, and that's an evaluation, obviously, we don't do in the survey, but, uh, staff would do that as a secondary part of this.
And to add to that, um, in a number of these areas, our resources that we've had are relatively new and we're looking at longer-term benefits, so it hasn't had time to gestate, if you will, um, either. So that, I think that's another factor.
And I would just, one other point, and this is sort of a footnote. Uh, we consciously took out some things like transportation and, um, affordable housing out of this list because we knew there were those other surveys that we've presented to you that were dealing specifically with those issues. So that's why they may not be in here, uh, and you may wonder why, why they're not. Okay. So moving on to the next question, uh, this was, how, how good a job do you think the county is doing managing funds? Uh, and in virtually everywhere we've asked this, and we've asked this in a lot of cities and we've asked this in a lot of school districts, um, as well as a couple counties. Uh, this almost is not, never as high as you'd like it to be. Um, a- and that's for one reason particularly, you've got nearly twenty percent who don't know. They just don't know what your budget is and what it's like, and they're honest and they tell you that they don't know. Um, so there is a, another opportunity there. Um, but having said that, that there is still a positive ratio, we're at fifty-four percent that have a very favorable or somewhat favorable view of how you're spending money versus twenty-seven percent that have an unfavorable view. And that's a two point zero to one ratio, uh, which, again, compared to other cities and school districts and where we've asked this question, is typical. Uh, so I, I don't think you're in a bad situation at all. Um, I think there's maybe an opportunity to tell people about your wise financial stewardship, uh, and, and help them understand it a little more than they do right now. Uh, the next question was awareness of Measure A. Um, and not surprisingly, only thirty-five percent, um, of the respondents, which again are representative of the, the entire population, not just the likely voters. But only thirty-five percent are aware of Measure A. Fifty-nine percent in round numbers are not. And that's not surprising at all. I mean, we use it as a, a handle, uh, uh, for insiders, but the average, um, resident does not understand that. Uh, the next question drilled down just those thirty-five percent that said that they have seen or heard something about Measure A. We asked them the same question that we did overall, which was, do you think that the county is doing an effective job, uh, managing those dollars? Uh, it moves down a little bit. We're at fifty percent favorable versus thirty-one percent in round numbers unfavorable. Uh, with a little bit higher twenty percent almost that are, don't know. Uh, now, these are people that said, I'm aware of Measure A, but I don't know about how good a job you're doing with it. So, you know, that, that questions maybe the, the honesty or the veracity of the awareness. Um, because if you're aware of Measure A, it's pretty obscure, why wouldn't you know more, a little bit more about it? Uh, that's a pretty big chunk. Again, I think that's an opportunity, not necessarily a negative, uh, to, to get the word out about what you're doing in terms of Measure A from a public, uh, opinion, a public, um, information perspective. Uh, the next set of questions shifted gears and these were asked just in those areas that the sheriff is responsible for law enforcement. Uh, and the first question was, uh, how do you view that job that they're doing, excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? Uh, seventy-five percent said excellent or good. Uh, we have fourteen percent that were fair, so that's sort of somewhere in the middle. Uh, and only five point seven percent, uh, six percent in round numbers, uh, that said poor or very poor, so a very small number. Uh, that's actually a great ratio of thirteen point two to one. So overwhelming, uh, positive feelings, uh, about the sheriff and the job they're doing in those communities. Uh, the next set of questions drills into feelings of safety and we've asked this question in, again, many different cities and a few counties over the years. And what we do is we say, it, do you feel safe, uh, in your, um, neighborhood during the day, uh, your neighborhood after dark? Uh, your neighborhood park during the day or your, uh, neighborhood park after dark? Uh, and it helps you understand, uh, where there are issues. Uh, you can see that your neighborhood during the day, when you add the, um, very safe and somewhat safe together, you have ninety-five percent that feel safe. That's a tremendous score. The eighty-two percent that say, uh, very safe, uh, is very, very high. So that's, uh, people during the day are quite comfortable with their communities. In their neighborhood after dark, uh, it not surprisingly goes down a little bit, but it's still two-thirds of the respondents that feel at least somewhat safe in their neighborhood after dark. Uh, their neighborhood park during the day is similar to their neighborhood, but a little bit lower at ninety-three percent in round numbers, vary or somewhat. Uh, and again, seventy-nine percent that said that they feel very safe in their neighborhood park. So during the day, people are pretty comfortable. Uh, and then neighborhood park after dark, uh, still sixty-nine percent that feel safe, but you can see that it shifted from very to somewhat. So there's still a little bit of question there. And when we did the follow-up to the people that said they feel unsafe, not surprisingly, the response they gave us was they're just not comfortable because it's dark. Um, and so some of those things you can deal with, some of them you can't, obviously. Uh, and that's, that's one of them that it maybe is a s- a sense of whether there's, um, a sheriff's, uh, deputy nearby. Uh, but you can't obviously change the, the darkness, so. Uh, at, at a much lower level, uh, crime and drugs, uh, and no police presence. But remember, this is not twenty-three year percent of the total population. This is twenty-three percent of those people who don't feel safe in any one of those areas. So it's a pretty small portion of the total, um, but it is those that feel unsafe. Uh, and then the last section of the survey dealt with, uh, uh, interaction with, uh, county employees. Um, and first question was, have you had interaction in the last twelve months? Twenty-four percent have, uh, the vast majority, uh, overwhelming majority at seventy-five percent have not had interaction. Of those that have had contact with a county employee in the last twelve months, we then drilled down and said, what's your opinion on the quality of service? Uh, is it excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? And you can see sixty-five percent said that it was excellent or good. Uh, eighteen percent gave it sort of a, that middle C range, eighteen, nineteen percent round numbers. Uh, and then fifteen percent said poor, very poor. So a very small number, relatively speaking. Uh, in fact, a ratio of four point two to one of the excellent or good to the, the poor ratings. Uh, so again, a very, very solid, um, opinion on the job that people are doing when, when they are interacting with the county. And that concludes the data that we have, um, for you today. Uh, as I said, there's certainly a lot more demographic information, um, geographic information as well as behavioral characteristics. So I'm happy to answer any more questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gobbi. Questions, comments?
Actually had just maybe one or two questions if I could. Could you, you spoke about some other counties doing satisfaction surveys or surveys. I'm curious, how many counties in California do this kind of customer satisfaction survey?
Um, not as many as obviously we would like. The ones that we've done in the Bay Area now are, um, uh, Marin and, uh, Alameda, quite a few years back. And then also Solano, to the extent that that's a Bay Area city. Uh, Kern COG is an outlier, uh, obviously Bakersfield, uh, they've been doing it every year for the last ten years. And it gives them useful information on a tracking level to see where they are. Now, they, there's a little more because it's a COG transportation oriented, but they do look at, uh, twenty-five different, uh, characteristics of the quality of life. So, so there are a handful of cities, I mean, we're not the only people doing this, so there's some that I'm not aware of, or counties, sorry. Um, but they're not as common as cities. Uh, and even for cities, I mean, what, this was pretty popular to do pre-recession. It fell off the cliff for the obvious reasons during the recession and it's just starting to come back now. Where, um, cities particularly, and I think more counties will say, you know, this, we need to know what people are thinking about their job performance.
Thank you. Just one other quick thing, I was just curious, do all board members have a copy of this material that you showed here today and is that?
Mr. President, it wasn't given to us beforehand, but I'll be more than happy to get that over to you. Yeah.
I would think folks would want to look at that a little more.
Sure, and there's additional information as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work.
I just want to make a comment. I think, you know, this is a good basis, really with the point of doing this, but I think this is, also could be a good roadmap for us as to, you know, doing outreach, education, and it would be helpful, I think, to do this for a couple of years in a row. As you, as John mentioned, you know, some of these things we just did in the last year or two, they haven't had a chance to, to sink in. But I do think it would be a good measuring stick for the future, um, to see if those numbers change, hopefully for the better. I mean, a lot of them look pretty good, but I mean, even so, I think it's, it really is a good testament to the type of work that's being done at the county. So I think it just helps us in our daily work.
Through, through the president, to, to add to that, um, if you recall the, the slide, uh, that Mr. Gobbi had that showed the, sort of the red numbers in, in the middle. Really, uh, in another context, when the board started to look at Measure A, board really called those the gaps in services and to a large extent. And so I think when we take a look at, at, um, measure, Measure A, um, uh, again, this fall, as you prepare for next year's two-year budget. That would be an area to concentrate on, both on performance and where additional resources may be needed in some of those areas. And we'll, we'll ask the departments to specifically take a look at those areas.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we do have one speaker.
Thank you.
Martin Fox.
Thank you again, um, President Selkum and members of the board, for bringing this kind of information to the public attention so they understand the way priorities are set. I think it's extremely important. And I'd, uh, ask you to, uh, have this posted on your meeting website as well so that the public might have access, uh, to this information. I think, uh, that would, would be part of an education program that would be very helpful, uh, in dealing, uh, with, uh, people and getting them connected with the right services like the mentally ill. And that's why I think that, that, that report should be posted, just like the full report, uh, on Measure A, uh, of the February twenty-third meeting. Because we need to know about the successes and compare them with the failures. And I think we have very few failures and we have a great many successes, and I think that we need to emphasize that. So I'd appreciate it if you would post that, uh, report on the meeting agenda website. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to, um, board member reports now. Supervisor Pine, do you want to start?
Uh, just, uh, wanted to mention that we have our Owl viewers now deployed at Coyote Point and very excited about that. As you likely know, these, these, these viewers look like the old-fashioned v- binoculars you would see at a, at a scenic rest stop or something. But when you look into them, you can look at the future of, in this case, sea level rise in that area. And also look at, um, how our new park project will, uh, approach that, uh, that challenge. So take a, take a, take a chance and go out and, uh, give it a try.
Thank you. Supervisor Tisia.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of William Fred Dean. He passed away on July twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen at the age of sixty-one. He was one of our employees here at the county. Uh, he attended McLeimans High School in Oakland where he graduated in nineteen seventy-two. He was an excellent student. He ran varsity track. He earned an academic scholarship to the University of California at Berkeley. But he left after his third year to join the Air Force, came back and resumed his education at California State University at Hayward and received a bachelor's degree in political science, minoring in business. Uh, he's had a long career here at San Mateo County. He, uh, began in nineteen eighty-one. He worked in several programs, beginning with aid to families with dependent children. He was promoted to the foster care program, as a program supervisor for the county and was currently a training and learning specialist in the human services department. He met his wife, Elizabeth Brown Dean, here at San Mateo County. Um, they later adopted a son, ten, ten years, um, were married in February of nineteen eighty-three and ten years later adopted their son, Christian. Um, he s- served as a department representative on several ASME union negotiating teams. He also served his community of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. He was, uh, served the Palo Alto Community Child Care Board of Directors. He coached Y-ball, YCM, YMCA basketball, Palo Alto Little League. And then served three years as a vice president of Ravenswood Little League and coached a team while his son was playing in the majors in East Palo Alto. He became a member of the Palo Alto Unitarian Universalist Church in nineteen ninety. And then in two thousand and five, he transferred his membership to the Abundant Life Christian Fellowship in Mountain View. Uh, his main interests were learning through reading, exploring and conversations. He was a peaceful man, meditating daily, running five miles a day, and for years was a regular at the Page Mill YMCA. So our sympathy goes out to his wife and his son. And also, I know you're always waiting for this, so I'll bring up the Age Well Drive Smart Seminars. San Carlos, Tuesday, August twenty-third in Foster City, Thursday, September twenty-ninth, and Daly City, Tuesday, October eighteenth. And once again, Seniors on the Move, Tuesday, October twenty-fifth at the event center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Grue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Supervisor Tisia, are you gonna take that class before you leave us?
I don't think I need to.
Okay. I would like us to adjourn in memory of John K. Jack McInerney, who, um, was a longtime county employee, two years as a prosecutor in the San Mateo County District Attorney's Office. He also, uh, was the program assistant in our, in our private defender program for, for a number of years. And, uh, he was, took on the additional position of executive director of the Bar Association as the administrator for over twenty years. Um, he served this county and its criminal justice system well. And also, um, this is, this is really an awfully sad one that I know you've all been reading about in the newspaper. Calvin Riley, who was twenty years old, was shot and killed Saturday night in San Francisco. He was a resident of Foster City in San Mateo and graduated from Sarah High School in two thousand and fifteen and was a very distinguished baseball pitcher. With this, um, he was also a sophomore at Joaquin, um, Delta College where he, he was a pitcher as well. This summer, he played during, in, in the Menlo Park Legends, which is a local baseball team. And, um, it apparently was, was, um, no, no reason, just senseless according to the newspaper. He and his pals were doing this Pokemon Go in San Francisco around Gear Deli Square. And, uh, suddenly he was shot and paramedics were unable to save him. And, uh, so, um, our thoughts go out to his family and his parents and to, uh, to Sarah High School who lost a very distinguished young man.
Just if I might, I was just gonna add a little bit about, uh, Jack McInerney, and I know John Moffey and I knew him very well. I, I first knew him, um, when I was a pretty new patrolman at Daly City Police and had, uh, you know, a pretty significant case. And he was the DA who was prosecuting the case at the time. And so he and I always had kind of a special relationship over the years. And when he was in the Bar Association as the, uh, running the private defender program, um, I spent a lot of time with Jack and, um, he, he was, he's really one of a kind. He'd just tell you exactly what he thought. And we would argue sometimes, always as friends, and I would say, the guy's guilty, and he'd say, no, he's not. And, um, you know, we'd have that kind of back and forth banter a, a lot. And, uh, when he, in case, one of the things that he, when he retired, I always kind of hoped that he would come around because he was such a good guy. But he, once he left, he never came back. He never looked back and, um, he moved on. Did a lot of so- social stuff, but one of the things he did, he was a great cook. Apparently, he, he learned from his mother. He could actually, I know his grandmother, he was half Italian, half Irish, which is pretty typical for somebody growing up in San Francisco at that time. He, uh, he could actually tell you what was the ingredients of cooking by smelling it. He learned that, his, his grandmother apparently had him blindfolded to teach him all this stuff. So he was a fabulous cook. The other things he did is he wrote a book, uh, at the end of his life called, it's entitled, My Mother's Knee and Other Joints. There are a lot of stories, uh, I guess he put together. So he was just a, he was a great guy. Uh, the other person is two people from the Sheriff's Department. One was Leonard Cardosa, who was my predecessor. He passed away. Uh, he was in his eighties. He was in his 80s. He spent probably well over 30 years in the department. I think he was the sheriff for about seven years, when he was the undersheriff for Brendan McGuire, and when Brendan died, somewhere in about 1984, '85, he was the acting sheriff and then was elected, served for about seven years, and then he left and ran and was his successor, I guess. In that case, he moved to Wyoming to be closer to one of his daughters and grandchildren. He passed away. And I understand there's going to be a memorial service someplace in San Jose, I'll certainly let you know. The other person was Mary Ganley, and she was a corrections officer, and again, somebody that you might have known as well, John, because he was the president of the DSA for a period of time. I had some presidents who were not cooperative, and Mary was, you know, they were difficult. And we always worked together in terms of salary and benefits, but, you know, when it came to running the department, I always said, I run the department, not you. In any case, Mary was, she worked a lot on the Peterson trial. She actually was assigned to work with the family of Lacy Peterson, and she developed a real bond with them for us, and that was kind of helped us through that process. One of the funny things I remember about Mary was that, you know, when you have these internal affairs investigations, and, you know, the deputies or corrections officer would tell her what they did, and then she would go into our Office of Professional Standards, and when they found out what they really did, she would turn to them and say, you did what? And so she didn't necessarily, she usually, oftentimes started with administration, which was kind of nice for a union leader to actually side with us. In that case, she was probably the best union person I had. I know the current one, current union president, does a great job for the sheriff, but Mary was really a fine person to work with. And the last one to adjourn in memory is of Walter Howard Gerlstone. He spent his early years in Marin County, and he eventually went to Menlo College, graduated from the University of Oregon, actually in 1942, and BA in economics. And then he promptly reported for military duty in Hollywood, Florida. Was a pilot United States Marine Corps, and he spent a couple of years doing transport missions in northern China. He, his first wife predeceased him, and he married in about 1902, no, I'm sorry, 2002, Martha Miller, and they were, shared their life together for the last 15 years. He followed his father's career, and he worked for about 37 years in a financial district in San Francisco as an insurance executive, very successful man. And once he retired, he ended up, he purchased a lot of properties, retail and office properties in and around San Carlos, and he earned generous, he earned a reputation as being a kind, cooperative, and really generous landlord. And he, of course, made a lot of friends with all the people who rented his buildings. He has a great legacy in the city of San Carlos. He was really involved in some projects in Burton Park in San Carlos. He was a member of the San Carlos Park and Recreation Foundation, did a lot with San Carlos's 4H, and worked with the Hiller Aviation Museum, real active in the Sequoia Hospital Foundation. And he was honored as the citizen, San Carlos Citizen of the Year in 2001, and Silicon Valley Community Foundation Philanthropy Citizen of the Year in the year 2008. Great man, great veteran.
Thank you, Supervisor. Two things. First thing I wanted to give a shout-out to Sheriff Carlos Bulanos. Last week, we had the opportunity to meet with the, over, was a working lunch of business owners and residents of North Fair Oaks. And the purpose of that lunch was for business owners and the residents to share with the new sheriff some of their concerns, things that you would guess, like parking and illegal dumping and speeding cars and those kinds of things. But, you know, our new sheriff handled it very well, and I think as a result of that working lunch meeting, that we actually will make some improvements in certain areas in North Fair Oaks, and I just wanted to give him a shout-out for coming and meeting with those folks. The second thing I have is that earlier this year, we started talking with American Medical Response about the possibility of a scholarship program. The scholarship program would be for two youth. Originally, we thought one from North Fair Oaks and one from East Palo Alto. As it turned out, didn't quite work out that way. But AMR is, has agreed and will provide two fully-paid scholarships to two young people from North Fair Oaks to do the EMT program and coursework at the College of San Mateo. And the really cool thing is that once the kids finish the program, AMR actually will employ those kids as EMTs. And I just wanted to mention their names. Really, a great young man, Carlos Garcia, who lives in Redwood City. This is kind of a kid that's been on his own since he was 14, supporting himself and just fighting to get ahead. It's just a really, you know, touching story of his background. And he's in the Explorer Program with the Menlo Park Fire District, and when we called him to tell him that he was a winner of the scholarship, he actually started to cry on the telephone, was just so thankful to the county and to AMR for this opportunity to improve his situation in life. And the guy is just a real fighter. So congratulations to Carlos. And the other is a young woman, Ms. Niedra Guzman, who lives in Redwood City, graduated from Sequoia High School in 2013, and does a lot of work at the Sienna Youth Center. And she was really interested in exploring this EMT program. And as I said, it's a fully-paid scholarship program with guaranteed employment if you finish the program successfully at the end. And she, too, was very, very grateful and very emotional about AMR and the county giving her the opportunity to get involved in a new career and path forward for her life. So just wanted to, you know, share that with you and give a shout-out to American Medical Response for undertaking this great program. With that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will move to closed session, and we will come back and report out at the conclusion. Thank you all. Mr. Byers, could you report out, please?
Yes, thank you, President Selkum. The board met in closed session to consider and discuss the four items listed on the agenda. There's only one reportable action, and the board did authorize an additional $600,000 for the law firm of Kerr and Wagstaff for additional legal services in support of the Still Path versus County of San Mateo litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Byers. We are adjourned.